Tori, can you hear us? But we can't hear you still.
Yeah, we don't hear Tori.
Do you have a phone you can dial in?
There's Mark again.
No.
I don't see me on the screen at all.
Tori, this is Luke again. There may have been a window that popped up when you first logged in. Down on your taskbar, it'll look like an orange flower. It'll ask you what, how you want to connect your audio.
No, we can't read that either. I can't.
I hate.
Chat, use the chat window there.
I'm getting pop-ups on this thing. It's slowing my computer down.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome.
Apparently, my computer decided to use all not the right settings. And there was like a really bad delay.
Okay.
Hey Luke, are you still there?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm here.
Just a procedural question for the, for the public who wants to.
Sorry for stealing your spot, Jan.
Should I drag them?
That's okay.
Or should I unmute them through the webinar?
So they're, say, I'm sorry, say that one more time. They're wanting to join you, what?
For the public that wants to speak, should I drag them in on the call-in studio or should I unmute them on the webinar?
It depends on where they are. If they're already in the webinar, you can have them just raise their hand.
Okay.
Raise their hand button and then you can unmute them when it's public comment. If they're already on the phone call, you're just going to move them into the host room. They'll automatically be unmuted and they can start talking and then when they're done, you can move them back into the screening room.
Okay, they're on both, so I will choose one when we get there.
Yeah, up to them or you.
All right, Mark, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I don't know if you guys can see me. I can't see if my camera's working enough, but.
It is.
Let's go ahead and call a meeting order. Okay, I only see Mike, Phil, Tom, and Dwayne. I don't know if that's what I'm supposed to see, but that's all I got.
You have Tori?
Yeah, I can't. So, okay, so let's go ahead and call her and do, are we going to pledge to the leaders or? Are we, are we doing the pledge? Okay, then stand, propose, and we'll do it. We got a flag. I don't have a flag. Let's begin.
Tell me about my son.
All right, pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
Who's the pledge?
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all.
Stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just.
Okay, that was terribly awkward, but thank you. Let's, let's have a call, please, Annette.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Keen? Hello?
Here.
I think, I, thank you, I heard that. Commissioner Shaw?
Oh, no.
Here.
What? Commissioner Wolf?
Here.
Commissioner Zirk?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff?
Okay, I'm here.
Here.
Chairperson Dearest?
Here.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thanks. Motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
I'll second.
Thank you. I think that was Commissioner Zirk with the first and Commissioner Anderson with the second. Is that correct?
Sure, that'll work.
That'll work.
Okay, Commissioner Zirk?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen? I believe that was a yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff?
Yes.
Chairperson Dearest?
Uh, yes, you're kind of breaking up, but yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Annette. Okay, so, uh, public comment. So we're going to move to public comment. Uh, this is a portion of the meeting. Reserve persons wishing to address the commission on a matter not on the agenda over which the commission has jurisdiction, speakers are limited to three minutes, please state your name for the record. Uh, before making your presentation, the commission may take action to direct the staff to place the matter of business on a future agenda. Do we have anybody present that wishes to speak to the, uh, to the commission? Sorry, my dogs are in here. Do we have anybody? Annette, that's, um.
We, we do not have a public comment tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. We have one item, Mr. Draft Minutes of, uh, April 21. Motion to approve?
Move to approve. I'll second.
Okay, we have a person second, and roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Keen?
It was me who did the second, I think, Annette.
Oh, okay, thank you. I wasn't sure. It's hard to tell. So Commissioner Wolf? Do you next? Okay.
Yes.
Um, thank you. Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Zirk?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff?
Yes.
Chairperson Dearest?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you. My audio is kind of breaking up a bunch here, so I'm trying to catch it most of it. We don't seem to have any public hearings, so we're on to the, um, for each of the following items, the public will be given an opportunity to speak after staff report. Uh, public hearing and inviting the applicant representative to make any comments of the public will be invited to, to the commission following the act. Speaking for the record, uh, as the commission for three months, public comments have been received, the hearing will be closed and the commission will guide them and take appropriate action. Um, first, we'll start with ex parte, and I'm just, so that way we don't step on each other, so, Mr. Shaw, any ex parte?
Yes, I discussed this with John Holder, Phil Dunsborough, and Ryan, um, what's Ryan's name down in public works?
Ryan Hayes.
Hayes, yes.
Okay, um, Dwayne, do you have any ex parte?
Um, I, we, we saw this on the DRC.
Okay, Jeff, how about you?
No, none here.
Do you have any ex parte?
I do not.
Tori? I'm not, not hearing. Jan, do you have any ex parte?
No, no ex parte.
Okay, and I saw it at the, at the DRC level, and I'm going to back up here because I didn't hear if Tori gave an answer or not.
You did.
Yes, I heard Tori give an answer. I heard Tori.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. My audio is break up, so I might have seen some parts, but okay. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff for their report.
Mark? You didn't call on me. I have no ex parte. You didn't call on me. I have no ex parte.
Tommy, give you. Sorry, Tom.
That's okay.
I have the, the one item here for conditional use permit, uh, 6501 Villa Avenue. That'll turn it over to staff for their report.
Great, thank you, commissioners, and good evening. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
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 Great. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you so we can pull up the presentation. All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Oh.
Somebody say something?
Oh, okay, now I see it.
All right. Just, um, let me know if you can't hear me or if the screen has any issues or anything like that, and we'll fix it. But the, the item tonight is the Sprouse Communications Office and Storage Yard. Um, it's a conditional use permit at 6501 Villa Avenue. So this is a zoning map of, uh, the site in this surrounding area. Um, it's industrial zoning. The entire lot is about 7.36 acres. Um, and the project area, or what they're leasing, is about 1.3 acres. So they're not using the entire site. Um, as I said, it's industrial zoning. And it's a long traffic way, um, just north of the Tascadaro Creek. This is an aerial view of the site. In red is the lease area, in yellow is a existing office that Sprouse Communications will also be using. Just a little background on the project in the parcel. Uh, there's a landscape yard that was approved in 2018 by the Planning Commission. Uh, last year, an RV storage yard project was proposed and then withdrawn. Uh, the landowner has completed some site improvements, mainly the re-asphalting of the parking lot and some frontage improvements on the site, and then cleaning up the office structure. Uh, last month, there, I believe it was in April, uh, DRC approved for, recommended that the project move on to Planning Commission with some minor design recommendations. And tonight, or this evening, we are seeking PC approval for the use permit and the placement of a second cargo container on the site. This is a quick summary of the DRC recommendations. Uh, the DRC recommended that laying use on the site is appropriate and the site design is appropriate for the property location. They approved reduced landscaping per staff recommendation and per allowances in the Tascadaro Municipal Code. Uh, they recommended that lighting should be installed and comply with the Tascadaro Municipal Code. They approved the installation of one cargo container. And they also recommended that the cargo containers be painted a neutral color to match the existing office building on site. So the project summary, as I said, it's about a 1.3 acre site. They're going to use it for outdoor contract construction services, a storage yard. Uh, utilize the existing office and also place two cargo containers or C-trains on site. Outdoor storage yards in excess of 10,000 square feet require a conditional use permit. Therefore, they are applying for the conditional use permit. And additionally, the placement of two or more cargo containers requires a conditional use permit as well. The project was approved for one cargo container at DRC Committee. A little bit about the site design. Existing building will be used for office space. There'll be limited outdoor area that will be utilized for material and equipment storage. Uh, there will be some minor improvements, mainly to landscaping and replacement and adding new fences. Uh, the lease area is located approximately 150 feet away from the creek, which is well within the required creek setback, and also located outside of the flood zone. So here you see an overview of the site plan. There's an existing septic system, leach field on site. Uh, there's a, they will be putting DG and all-weather surface in the majority of the outdoor storage area. There's an existing concrete pad on site, and on the south end of the site, you see the proposed placement of the two cargo containers. You see the existing office building and some of the proposed and existing landscaping along the frontage on Villa. Architectural design, here you see the building frontage, uh, from Villa. On the right hand of the screen here is the office building. There's a parking lot here, and then you'll see the landscaping that is proposed along the building frontage. And then you can also see the screening of the cargo containers on the south end of the site. Here are the architectural designs of the cargo containers or C-trains. They're pretty straightforward. And these will be anchored into the ground as well. That's a requirement of our municipal code. For landscaping, the applicant's proposing five new Chinese pistachio trees along the building frontage, three new trees behind the building parking lot, and an array of native and dry-riest ground cover shrubs along the street frontage. Tascadaro Municipal Code, section 9-4.125, requires a minimum landscape coverage of 5% for industrial zones sites. And the applicant will be landscaping approximately 2% of the site. Staff is recommending that the landscape requirement be reduced due to the natural nature of the site and the existing vegetation along the creekside. Here's a landscape plan proposed. As I said, they're proposing three new Chinese pistachio trees on the rear side of the parking lot. Five new additional pistachio trees along the building frontage, and they're also preserving existing oak trees on the site. We're fencing, screening, and lighting. Existing on the side is a wooden fence along the back side of the lease area, a chain link fence along the creek, and also a wooden fence along the northwest side of the property. There's also an open pipe fence and a wooden fence along the site frontage on Villa Avenue at the parking lot. The applicant is proposing to install the following new fences. A six-foot tall wooden privacy fence that will separate the vehicle and material storage area from the remaining lease area that slopes towards the creek. And they are also proposing to replace the pipe fencing along the building frontage. The two proposed cargo containers will be sufficiently screened by existing trees in the office building and the painted, and also they will be painted a neutral color. There'll be one cargo container installed. The DRC review, which is already being approved, and a second cargo container will be installed with Planning Commission approval. They're also proposing to install motion sensor security lighting on all sides of the existing office building. So here's an overview of the fencing, screening, and lighting. In yellow, you see the new fences. There is an existing fence on the rear of the lease area, and they're proposing a new fence that will connect to this existing fence and continue along all the way to the office building. In red, you see the location of the proposed shielded and motion sensor lighting. And in yellow, along the building frontage along Villa, will be the new location of the replaced pipe fencing. Here are some site photos. On the top left, you see the existing parking lot in, along the property frontage and the site access. On the bottom right, you see the existing storage area. On the top left is the existing storage area on concrete pad facing south. And on the bottom right is the existing building with the existing oak trees that would, will be preserved on site. As this is a storage yard, we are proposing, uh, that the applicant comply with, um, a significant amount of use permit conditions in order to maintain the site, and I'll just go through these briefly. All landscaping, fencing, and site improvement shall be maintained in good order. No changes to fencing, landscaping, or site improvements may be installed without prior approval by the city. The use of accessory storage containers is limited to two cargo containers, which also require construction permits. Excuse me. Cargo containers shall be painted neutral colors. No items other than fleet vehicles, construction equipment for the current business, and supplies and materials for the current business may be stored on site. No storage of vehicles may occur on any location other than in the designated onsite parking areas and all-weather surface areas identified in the site plan approved by Planning Commission. No sublease of the building or site may occur unless otherwise approved by the city. No other land use shall be allowed in conjunction with the Contract Construction Services Yard unless specifically approved by the city. No washing of vehicles may occur on site. No dumping of waste or stores of construction waste may occur on site at any time. No storage, paving, stockpiling, grading, or use of the site shall be allowed beyond the area identified in site plan for active use and within 30 feet of the top of the bank of Tascadaro Creek. The existing testing wells on the site shall be removed in coordination with the County Council of the Department of Environmental Health or protected by permanent fencing. All new fences shall be water-vital coated with a neutral color. And barbed wire shall not be installed anywhere on the site. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Class 1 categorical exemption as the project consists of the leasing of an existing private facility with negligible expansion beyond the existing use. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt draft PC Resolution 2020 approving the conditional use permit, allowing the use of a Contract Construction Services Yard and existing office, as well as a placement of two cargo containers. Alternatively, the commission may approve modifications to the project and/or conditions of approval for the project. The commission may determine that more information is needed for that and back to staff, or the commission may deny the permit. That concludes my presentation, and we're here to answer any questions. I also believe the applicant is on the phone to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, John, I appreciate that. Does anybody on the Planning Commission have questions for staff?
Yeah, Mark? Mark?
Tom, go ahead.
Could I have, uh, a definition of what will be stored in the storage containers, the C-trains, and what will not be allowed in the C-train?
Um, yeah, I'll refer to the applicant on that. I'm not sure what they're proposing to store in the C-trains. I do know Sprouse Communications is a contractor for, I believe, Charter, so it's mainly telecommunications equipment. Um, but I think the applicant is on the phone.
Yeah, let's, um, maybe hold that till we get to the applicant's presentation, and then, um,
Okay.
My understanding, they were going to use that for tooling and, and smaller items, um, for the site, but let's, um, hold off on that detail for the applicant. But in terms of conditions, I don't believe we have a condition that speaks to what can and cannot be stored inside the cargo containers. I'm not sure we were concerned about that unless they were going to do flammable items, which is not being proposed. So anyway, it's at the commission's pleasure if, when you get to your final deliberation after we hear from the applicant, um, if you wanted to add additional conditions.
Okay, anybody else have a question for staff? You're going to have to speak up and not raise your hand because I can't see everybody. All I see is Mike, Tom, and Dwayne, and, and Phil. I can't even see myself, so. All right, if there's no other questions from, from the commission, then if the applicant is bored and wishes to make a statement, um, all right, uh, yeah, now's the time, actually.
I will unmute them on the webinar and see if they come through.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I can hear.
Okay, the, the answer to the question of what's going to be stored in the C-trains are just electronics from Charter, um, uh, copper, stuff like that, that we don't want to get stolen or leave in the back of the truck. And the tooling is for bore machines. Uh, not, nothing major that is like chemicals or any oils or anything like that. It's mostly just electronics and tooling.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, Jesse Sprouse.
Thank you.
I, I have a quick question. I probably should have asked this to staff, but the location of the, the storage container, there was some concern from a letter we received about the location of it. Are we at least 75 feet from, I guess, from the creek to the adjacent creek?
Yes.
Okay, I, that's what I thought. I thought we were like 100 feet, if I'm not right.
Yeah, we're about 150 feet away from the creek.
Okay. Okay, uh, that's a question I have right now. I need some to add to.
Well, if I may, let me follow up with the, the question I had, and that, that does answer the question. The second question I have is what will, what kind of ground cover or, uh, base will be underneath the C-trains to, to provide for, um, protection to the soil from, from the use of the C-trains? They do tend to rust, and, uh, you know, that over a period of time, they can leave quite a, a little bit of debris. So what, what are you going to put the C-trains on? There is, I, I don't see concrete or tarmac or anything.
It's going to be a class-two base with, uh, four engineered pilling, pillings in the four corners, anchored down.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other question, or does the applicant have anything more that you'd wish to add at this point?
I don't. I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay, well, I just asked because now I want to open it up. I don't, I don't play anybody from the public, but now's the time to open it up to the public for any, um, questions or comments that they may have. Um, Kelly or Phil, whoever's in control, that, um, do we have anybody online that wants to speak up?
There's nobody else online for comment.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. Then I'll bring it, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission for, uh, further discussion or questions of the applicant, um, and/or staff. If we have, Mike, Mike Shaw, you have a question?
Are you going to be doing any vehicle maintenance in this yard?
Can you hear me now?
Hello?
Uh, no. Uh, we have a mechanic yard in Paso Robles. Um, and then we've been using the person across the street to do our oil changes, and, uh, only mechanic thing we'll be doing in that yard if we break down and we have to get it out to get it to the shop.
Okay. Okay. Dwayne, you're one of the few I can see, and you're raising your hand. Do you have a question?
Yeah, dear Dwayne.
We lost, somebody turned Dwayne on. You're, you're muted, Dwayne. We can't hear you.
There I go. I thought I muted it. You hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so on page 11 of the report, um, near the top, it talks about the, uh, the fencing that would exist at the rear, which would divide the, the lot from the remaining acreage behind it. And I, I know in the DRC, we, uh, we kind of thought that a new fence with, it says here, existing, uh, with, uh, metal panels faced with, uh, wood framing. And I believe the reason that we did that was because we knew that if somebody's going to build something in the back and it, and hopefully it's going to be maybe like a an industrial campus of some kind because there's so much area, we wanted a, a nice, a nice fence there as, as to the, as a division between those two. as as to the as a division between those two. I see that that's been dropped by the applicant, so I'm not sure if, um, that's something actually I I am willing to go along with.
That's what is planning on developing the whole thing in a couple of years. So I think for now, I mean, you're going to want to fence up just for them to tear it down when they're going to plan on developing the whole property. That's what I was told.
Oh, okay. I guess there's a question for staff to just discuss that a little further as to what they, what they would. Is that true?
I think I think staff comfortable with that. They are discussing and working on a long-term plan for the rear site. And we would assume that the rear site development would also be working on a whole different fencing, screening, landscaping plan. And it would actually involve all of the buildings and quite significant site improvement. Um. So we felt comfortable with that. Now, the one thing I will bring up, um, is the construction of a new fence that fences out the area that's down below. I'm a little concerned if that fence is a screening fence that you end up with a sort of no man's land where nobody's eyes are on that area. So that would definitely want to bring attention to that. And, you know, especially along the creek, we have a lot of issues with people living along the creek. And you definitely want to keep your eyes on that area. And so it seemed like the applicant's plan was to have a screened fence there, but might want to have something you can see through or or have it not be too tall. Just a, just a point there of the recommendation from staff level and, um, John, are you aware of that? Fencing style over there? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I believe they're proposing a similar fence to what's existing on the rear of the site. I don't believe they're proposing the transparent fence.
Am I unmuted?
That may be a condition we could put on there.
My recollection was that, um, uh, along the creek side here, it says fencing chain link fence along property facing the creek on the northwest side of the property. I I believe we discussed that in the DRC because we felt that was an important thing, that there'd be some visibility of of along the creek in terms of that you didn't want any encampments or anything going on.
Yeah.
Um, and so that looks like that's in that that's in.
Yeah, that chain link fence won't change along the creek. There's still the transparent fence adjacent to the creek. Um, the new fence they're proposing is just that.
The street, it's actually well screened. You can't see really past the parking lot. Um, is that what you're referring to, Phil? Is is maybe that should be something that's either like a like a lower fence so they could see or else it would have to be, I would assume, chain link in order to be visible.
Yes, yes, exactly. That's what I'm referring to. I'm concerned that we create a hidden area at the top of the creek bank where nobody can see, um, that area. And it's going to be a, you know, a constant maintenance problem if that's the case, so.
You can keep in mind that the cargo containers are on the other side of the fence, so they will be accessing those cargo containers regularly. Um, that's just something to note as well.
Oh, fence is way up there on that side of the cargo containers, right behind the building.
Exactly, yeah. It it's more of a fence just to, um, fence in their storage area and keep it above that grade area.
Oh, I never mind. Okay, I thought it was lower down on the site near the creek. Okay. Okay. Got it. Never mind.
Now you've got me turned about. Where on this map on page eleven is the creek?
Will you bring up the site plan, John?
Yeah, so. Let's see. Um, this is the same map, so. It's kind of a zoomed in, um, image of the site plan. So if you see my mouse, the creek would be over here.
Right.
It's actually not on here. Um, and I'll go back to that site plan that we saw earlier.
Okay.
So they're proposing a fence to be about right here, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cargo containers right here.
Okay.
So there's a chain link fence that's down by the creek, which is down here.
Creek is along the property line?
The creek is, yeah, and this opens, uh, it's an open space over here. Um, so the site plan that you see on page eleven is essentially only this red area here.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
So now what fences is on the very, I guess you, the the backside? Yeah, right where your cursor is there, that along there, that that is now a dog-eared wood fence?
Exactly, yeah. So we have pretty old aerial image on our GIS. And there's an existing wooded fence here, and they're going to place a new fence that goes down.
Okay.
Towards their operation, yeah.
So so Phil, is that is that that very back fence that the existing wood fence is what you had some concerns about as far as visibility?
Not so much. I thought there was another fence at the boundary of their youth area lower down. Um, which would sort of, um, you know, be a lot closer to the creek area. So in other words, if a fence at the back of the building there just around the storage containers seems appropriate for screening.
Yeah. Okay, I know, I think it it looks good.
Okay, um. Tori or Jan or Jeff, you guys have anything you want to add?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
I I think it's pretty, oh, Mike, Mike, go for it, Mike.
I'm I'm looking at this letter that we got from John. Skylock, Sky. Yeah, it looks to me like he's requesting that the, uh, owner or the leasing put a fence along the whole border of the big property with the Tascadero Creek. Am I reading that right?
I believe he is, um, recommending a transparent fence, um, along the property along the creek, which there is an existing chain link.
He's talking about the the large property, not this, uh, project property.
And that's not a a point of subject tonight, so when the future development be able to look at that sort of offense, but right now because of the scope of the project, it's much, much smaller than the entire property. And so I'm not sure that, um, the person who wrote the letter understands the exact scope or scale of the particular project. We tried to reach out to him to to discuss, but his phone number was disconnected. We've had difficulty reaching him. Do we have anybody else on the phone, Kelly, waiting to speak at all?
We do not.
See, I don't I don't see how we can burden this project with fencing the entire site. That's not, doesn't seem right.
Doesn't seem to be a nexus for that.
Well, not if the fencing is to, uh, to, so to so to speak, prevent, uh, people from looking in. It's not going to do any good way over there by the creek.
Well, I'm, uh, I wonder if we're ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I think we're at that point. Um, anybody wishes to do that?
Sure. Uh, I I move that plank mission adopt draft PC resolution twenty twenty approving the conditional use permit UFC twenty zero zero one zero allowing use of a a contract construction service yard existing office.
I second.
Thank you, Dwayne. We have a first. Who's going to the second? I'm the seconded.
Michael did.
Oh, Mike did, okay. Uh, Annette, can we get roll call, please?
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
She's trying to say yes.
She's trying to say yes. I couldn't read her lips.
I'll take that as a yes. Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Zirk?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Chairperson Daris?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. This is painful. I think I need a better computer or something. At least a better webcam. Okay, so Commissioner comments and reports. Does any commissioner have anything they wish to bring up at this point?
Nope.
Hearing none, move on to Director's Board. Phil, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we don't have an item for our next regularly scheduled hearing, but soon we will be bringing you a major update for the Del Rio specific plan up at Del Rio El Camino Real. And we are making progress on looking at some substantial changes to the way traffic mitigation would be handled up there, which would allow some development to finally move forward. As of this, as of this date, we still do not have any plans for a large retail store like Walmart or anything else. Uh, but simply a business park on the northeast corner. And we wanted to modify the mitigation to accommodate that particular plan, so it's a dramatic reduction in traffic. So we'll likely be bringing that to you, um, in probably early July, um, that's the hope. Um, and then, um, we should also be bringing some other items forward soon, um, more along the policy side of things, but in terms of the development review world, we don't have any particular items that are getting close, but I'm I'm happy to answer your questions about any of the large development projects you see happening in towns. A lot of things that are now active such as the Emerald Ridge Apartment, the Grand Oaks Project, which is the micro housing. Uh, the Human Being Coffee Shop is being constructed. So a lot of dirt flying around town. Of course, La Plaza downtown moving along, progressing nicely. Um, but, uh, a lot of distractions happening right now, too. This environment makes it difficult, uh, makes it difficult financially. Um, and of course, all the latest events add yet another wrinkle of challenge. I also want to let you know that, uh, if you are around the downtown tomorrow, uh, it will be a challenge getting to City Hall in the first half of the day. There will be a graduation ceremony for the, uh, graduating high school seniors. And that will be a parade, a driving parade. Um, and that will be going past the front of City Hall. That's why the fencing is out there right now. And, uh, trying to get the plumbers out to students on a drive-by situation without drawing big crowds, but it's basically going to block off City Hall for the first half of the day. Um, so we're bracing for that. Hope that goes well. Um, but anyway, I'd be happy to answer your questions about any other happenings in the community or anything else development review later.
Phil? Phil, yesterday I was down at, uh, City Hall and, uh, they told me that the ceremony is going to run from ten AM and with three hundred students in cars and families coming up and then turning in front of City Hall. It's going to take all from ten till three. So it's going to be a lot of traffic.
Yeah, quite a while.
Whoa.
Yeah, so I'm planning on working from home tomorrow morning.
But just for those who are curious, it's going to be broadcast on KJUG and also on the the Tascadero Unit School District, uh, YouTube site. They apparently have a a broadcast. They had the cameras down there. They were getting rehearsed, getting ready.
Yep.
That'll be nice for the kids, I'm sure. I mean, they're kind of got shorted on this whole shutdown thing, so.
They really did. Oh, you know, one other thing I should mention to you all, and I'd like you to get the word out, um, we've been doing a lot of, um, outreach to all of the businesses and especially restaurants. And we now have a new streamlined process for restaurants that want to set up outdoor dining, whether that's in their parking lot, whether that's on a sidewalk, whether that's in an area that's not used right now. And four or five businesses now are moving forward, taking advantage of that um, during this time. And also ABC has put in place a new streamlined process to allow folks that want to serve alcohol and food to be able to get a streamlined approval to do that in a very short order. Um, so that's another information piece that's out there. So tell everyone about that, that they're welcome to give me a call, come to the city. And our goal is to have a two-day turnaround to get an outdoor dining permit, which is basically like an express encroachment permit to allow dining on the sidewalk where there's space or within a parking area that's underutilized. So we're trying to really promote that.
Great idea.
Um, so Phil, I, um, a question I I have is, uh, on Traffic Way, um, a while ago, we we looked at and then okayed a project that was going to be like a a restaurant. And then a couple, I think, of apartments in the back, you know, it's that that lot, it's sort of on next to the, what's what's that little plaza area there, uh, called anyway? Uh, so it's for sale now, so. It's for sale.
Grape encounters that and that distillery.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it looks like it looks like that project has stalled and we're not sure. We need to reach out to them. It looks like they may not have gotten their financing or it may not have penciled out in the very end. We're disappointed about that, so it it does not appear to be moving forward.
Oh, it's too bad, you know, because because we all worked so hard on it.
I know, I know.
Phil, is that the one that had the steep steep uprising in the back of the property and it took quite a bit of work to get it done?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, a little bit. It's a little bit of a challenging property. I think this is the second or third time that someone's got a plan approved and it just hasn't come to fruition. But, uh, there are other things moving forward, though, like next door to Colony Market and Deli, the project that includes, um, C train containers, which will be basically an outdoor beer garden, that is moving forward, that's a construction permit. Um, and there's a couple others that that I'm thinking of, too, that are also coming together, so. It's it's pretty impressive. Actually, a lot of projects are still moving forward and able to get their financing even through this particular time, so. We're definitely staying busy. Just can't wait to get things really back open again and and really want to support the businesses being able to do that. A lot of folks, though, are really having difficulty just getting their employees to come back off of unemployment. That's what I hear everywhere, you know?
Really? Wow.
Yeah.
Well, what 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 they're hearing is, uh, the six hundred dollars a week that was added on by the Congress has now put some of the employees earning more money as unemployed than when they were working.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And that's that's kind of a a dilemma that wasn't intended, but it it occurred.
Well, that's going to run out in July, though. I think that extra money is going to run out in July. That's what I understand.
Well, that's to stop the end of July, but now they're debating whether they'll continue it or not. If you want to call what's going on in Washington a debate.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else, Phil?
That's it.
Okay, I think at this point, then, if there's nothing else, we can adjourn till our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be June sixteenth. I don't know if you've got anything on the agenda at this point, but I'm sure we'll hear in time. Okay, all right.
Have a great show, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.